Let me call to order the meeting of the Board of Selectment for Tuesday, March 6, 2012. And the first item on our agenda is Billy Casper Golf and the status of that. And we have with us Motiek Pachus is here, who is the Chair of the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission. And Brian O'Hare is here. And Ryan Phelps is here. And so, who's going to make the -- is it going to be you, Brian?
Yeah, I'll start off.
Want to talk about the dues that have been recommended or revenue sources that have been recommended by the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission? Yeah? If you can pass those up.
With me also is Matt Farback. That's our Regional Director of Economy. He's working hard on the golf course product side.
So this reflects what?
It does, yes.
Thank you.
Do you want to have enough? Sorry? Do you have enough on this one? I believe I do. Well, I don't have any copies prepared.
Very good.
Yeah. So what you have in front of you? Just by way of background, so let the Board of Selectmen know that the Country Club of Woodbridge Commission met last night and discussed the 2012 rates for the Country Club of Woodbridge. And as a result of that discussion, unanimously approved the proposal that's before you tonight. Okay.
What you have in front of you is an overview of what we suggest would be the daily fee rates for both residents and non-residents, as well as the membership rates, both in the membership categories and rates. Right now, we've put this as a tentative schedule through April 30. Reason being that we want to reserve the right to adjust these rates should we find that they're too low or something like that, and we can respond to the demand that we receive in selling the products. This gives us a little bit of the flexibility to react based on what the market conditions show us. So, I will do a relatively brief overview of this, and I really look forward to any questions that you have as to how we derive the rates or some of the products that we might be recommending. On the daily fee side, the top section is SS means Saturday and Sunday. We're recommending a with cart rate of $69 for the public. All of the resident rates would be a 20% discount off of the other published rate. So, following the logic there, you can see why there is some uneven numbers, 55-20, 47-20, et cetera, on the resident rates. But $69 would be open to noon time. That includes a cart. On the weekend mornings, we would have a policy that cart is required. 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. would be $59 with cart, $43 if you walk. 4:00 p.m. and on would be $39, $29 if you walk. You can see that the carts are itemized at $16 per person prior to the 4:00 p.m. rate time. And then when we get into that twilight period at 4:00 p.m., the carts become a $10 add-on fee. And you can see, I believe that's itemized down below somewhere. Monday through Friday, rates are less expensive typically typical for a golf course rate structure, open to noon, $49 with cart. Here, we would not have a restriction on walking, so walking is welcome, so $33 without cart. At 12:00 p.m., $39, and at 4:00 p.m., $29 respectively. We think this reflects a good tiered pricing strategy. The noon rate break is something that we're very fond of. We've seen it work pretty well. Traditionally, golf courses might stretch that rate break to 2:00, sometimes even 3:00 o'clock. And you really see a lull in your demand once you get into that 11 to noon, 11 to 1 hour. So, we'd like to do is pull the price break up a little bit to stimulate a second wave of demand, and then we'll see a very strong twilight demand, certainly during the week, at that 4:00 p.m. time. We are also recommending a senior rate, which would be applicable for anybody over 62, and that's a Monday through Friday rate only, and that would be $39. And then for juniors, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a moment, but for juniors, we're looking at a $15 rate. Clearly, there's no cart fee associated with a junior rate because you need a driver's license in order to get that. So, it may apply, but then if it did, it would just be the standard cart rate. But $15 for juniors to walk, for non-residents, $12 for residents. So, that's the recommendation with respect to the daily fee pricing. We do anticipate that this pricing would not actually go into effect until about the first week of April. We would back away from this with about a 25, maybe to 30% discount for a winter rate opening rate to open the golf course as we as the grass comes out of dormancy and we start to improve the conditions. A lot of golf courses up here in the Connecticut market will go to their full season rates anytime between April 1 and April 15, depending on weather. With Good Friday being, I believe, April 6th this year, we may try to capture that demand with Good Friday potentially being a very good day. So, we'll keep our eyes on the weather and look at maybe the 6th might be the day that these full season rates go into effect to capture some of that opportunity.
Any questions? Um, the, what is the age for the junior rates? Where's that?
Seventeen and under.
Seventeen or under, okay. And did you explain already about the resident card? I just missed that. This thing where it says must apply for resident card?
Yeah, resident card would be free. And if you prove residency, you'll be given that card, and that'll afford you a 20% discount every time you play. So, the residents of Woodbridge would actually have available to them the most aggressive discounting that we offer. There's a program in here that I want to talk to next, once we get through this, called the Advantage Card, that is something that is a 15% discount off of the non-resident rate. So, the residents would, and that's for sale. So, the residents would still have available to them for no additional fee, the most aggressive pricing that we have. And we realize that it's a relatively small group of people when you consider the population that plays golf is only about 7%. You know, it's under 1,000 people. How many of them will play Woodbridge? But it's a nice benefit and a good, I think it's a good thing for the town to do.
Are you projecting a certain amount of members yet? Is that?
Yes, we are. We're projecting about 140 golfing members. And I think it was 100 and, yeah, if you have that available, that'd be great. On the pool membership, it's around that similar number. And that's 140 memberships separate. So, that would consider, if you were a single member or you were a family member, that's one. They would both be counted as one, one membership. Can I talk about our Kids Play Free program?
Sure.
Since we talked about junior rates as the last thing. We are, golf industry needs to find a way to remove barriers to children, to get them into the game and keep them in the game. And we're sampling some very aggressive junior programs. I think the junior rate, first and foremost, the $15 and $12 for residents is very aggressive. And I think it allows for kids to have access to the course. And that's available Monday through Friday. We'd like to take it a little further and have a Kids Play Free program, which I think we touched on in our last meeting, where we would allow kids to play free if accompanied by a paying adult, seven days a week, except for weekends before noon. That's certainly going to be a high demand time, and I think we're certainly being liberal enough with access that we're not being unfairly restrictive on that. So, something where a mom or a dad who wants to take their son or daughter out to come and play on a weekend afternoon can have the child come and play for free, provided that they fall in the junior category, which would be 17 or under. We've done this in other facilities, found with Country Club up on Cape Cod. We do Kids Play Free, seven days a week, all the time on our nine-hole course. It's been, it's been met with a lot of fanfare. It's been a lot of success. And it's also been a good revenue producer because it does bring a lot of parents out to play golf with their kid without having to bear the burden of an expensive weekend golf rate or something like that. So, I think the more we can remove barriers for juniors to have access to golf, they're the golfers of the future, that'll become your members of the future, so on and so forth. So, we recommend being as aggressive as possible with that program.
And the Amity Golf Team will have use of this facility for their practice and for matches.
Yeah. And any fee, if any, associated with that, and I don't know if there had been in the past or might not have been a fee.
There was no.
So, then, yeah, that's something that we work out with the coaches and the ADs from the schools and set schedules up, and we love that. We want kids to have golf teams especially to call Woodbridge home. So, yeah, that would be outside the scope of what is your daily access for a junior player. Annual Advantage Card program? Can I move on to that?
Sure.
Okay. The Advantage Card program, this is a program that is available to anyone who's a non-resident, only because it wouldn't be advantageous to a resident. It's a $29 card, and it allows the purchaser to get a 15% green fee and cart fee discount off his or her round of golf anytime he or she chooses to play. So, that would include weekend mornings, seven days a week. What this is intended to do is stimulate about a three to five round break-even point where we take our low utilization golfers. The average golfer in the database is going to play you about two to 2.3 times per year. That's what we see. So, we want to see, how do we get that person up into that three to four to five round range so we can capture a little bit more of their market share? The Advantage Card has been a way to do that. It's a small monetary commitment, $29 for the calendar year. It allows you to get that discount every time you play. Where we've run this in the past, and we've done this at two dozen clubs up here in the last several years, we've seen where that average round per customer of about 2.2 jumps to about almost five in most cases. So, we're capturing a much more substantial amount of market share from these people. So, it's a good loyalty, good reward program that we would recommend doing. And it still prevents any non-resident guests from getting a better benefit than residents. So, I think we're careful in making sure that the Woodbridge Town residents would still have the best daily fee value, even though we think that the Advantage Card also offers a substantial value to our non-resident guests. And I think we've, we expect selling about 300 of these.
How many would that?
About 300. I think we anticipate selling. Believe that's it on the daily fee, non-membership-driven items. I think I mentioned that the cart fees, we recommend a $16 per player cart fee prior to 4:00 p.m. and then a $10 per player cart fee in that twilight hour. If we were to do any back nine play only in the morning, as a brief, that would kind of mirror the twilight rate probably, and that would be a twilight fee if we find that there's a demand for that. Senior and junior rates are valid Monday through Friday, except holidays. I think that covers it. The annual cart package that you see on the list, actually, I suppose a non-member could buy it, but I don't know that a non-member would. But that's something that is really meant to be an add-on for the membership program, which if there are no questions about daily fee, I'm happy to jump into.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes? Okay. On the golf memberships, we take a look at golf memberships from a number of different angles, both from a single person to multiple person, and from a day-of-the-week access, as well as a time-of-the-day access. Traditionally, public course memberships have been either Monday through Friday or Saturday and Sunday. We're adding a little bit of a twist to that. So, we're recommending having a seven-day program, which is the most liberal, unrestricted golf, anytime, any day. We're recommending a five-day program, which will be Monday through Friday. In this case, typically, we allow it to include holidays. And then we're offering a twilight, twilight membership, which is the one that changes course a little bit from the traditional membership programs in that it doesn't have restrictions by day, but it has restrictions by time. Twilight program is something where you get access to the golf course starting at 1:00 p.m., seven days per week. Typically, that program is priced roughly 50% of the full seven-day program. But let me back up to the seven-day, go over that pricing, and I'll walk you through the twilight when we get to it. For the public, a $2,100 membership, $1,700 for resident, $1,300 for the five-day, $1,050 for a resident. And then the twilight, as you can see, is just slightly more than 50% of the public membership, slightly more than 50% of the resident membership. The logic behind the twilight, and the reason I want to address it is because it seems very inexpensive, considering you're going to allow seven-day access. The time when a golf course is least utilized is typically that 1:00 o'clock period, like I mentioned. We will have a rate break at 12:00. So, we're allowing for that hour of demand for public rates. That'll peter out roughly at about 1:00 o'clock. So, the time when the golf course is in that lull period between 1:00 and 4:00 where you're going to get to the next rate break, that's where you're least utilizing, you want to try to stimulate some play. Well, that conversely is the highest value period for the people who buy this membership program, because if they want to get the most out of it, the most daylight to play golf, they should show up at the first hour that they're available to play. That's worked out really well for us. We've typically sold 35 to 40, even 50 of these at some facilities, and it does not compete at all with your high-demand periods. It has not shown to cannibalize any of your seven-day members or five-day members because that group typically wants to play in the morning. So, what we've done is we've created a secondary product that reaches out to an entirely different database of people, and it's been very, very popular. So, we think it's a nice complement to having a seven-day and a five-day program. A little bit more about the pricing. For families, it would be $3,150. For public, $2,550 for residents. The five-day would be $1,950 for the public, and $1,575 for residents. It's our understanding that historically, or the last few years, you've afforded the resident pricing to any former Woodbridge members? And I understand?
That's what the board recommends.
Right. And my understanding is that we like to continue that, so we're supportive of that. And then we have a junior program, which is $300 and $250 for public and resident. We wanted to, in lockstep with the junior pricing and the Kids Play Free program, we're doing so many things aggressively, it needs to make sense financially for someone to buy a membership as a junior. So, we wanted that to be pretty aggressive, considering that the substantial use will come during a 60-day window in the summertime. And we'd love to have a membership program that allows some of our young golfers to call Woodbridge home. And then we have an add-on to the membership, which is a pool add-on and a tennis add-on, which is $400 and $350 for the single, $600 and $500 for the family. And then the tennis add-ons are $150 for, we made no residency distinction here with tennis, $150 for single and $200 for family. And the pool membership's on their own, $800 for a non-resident single, $700 for a resident single. Families would be $1,200 and $1,050 respectively. And the tennis memberships as a standalone are the same pricing as the add-ons. The golf membership benefits would be unlimited green fees, based on the restriction of the product they buy. Unlimited driving range and practice facility use. We talked last night about the locker room access, as well as the bag storage, and those are certainly going to be available, but those will be an optional purchase of $75 per amenity. So, if a person wants to buy both the locker room, the locker for the year, and the bag storage for the year, it would be an additional $150. And that's an optional purchase. Many private clubs will make that a required purchase, but this being a public access facility, we think that should be optional. We'll allow all members to make tee times 14 days in advance. Typically, the public will make them seven days in advance. What we will need some guidance from you on is what difference would you like residents to have from an access perspective? We probably would recommend 10 days. We feel that members who've bought a membership and committed themselves financially to the club should have the greatest window of access to tee times. But we do also feel that residents should be afforded a greater access from the general public. So, a 14, 10, and seven-day access window might make a lot of sense. 10% off of golf shop merchandise at all times, 10% off of food and beverage at all times. And then there's going to be reciprocal benefits at other BCG facilities. This still has a little work to be done, what exactly that means, but historically, what we've done is provide for access to our other facilities for a nominal fee. So, a member here could go play Lyman or go play Wittenbury or Oxford during restricted times for a nominal fee. It might be something like a player's fee of $20 or something like that. So, instead of going and paying, you know, $55 at Oxford Greens on a Tuesday, that member from here might be able to go and play for 20, something like that, that provides a nice value. We also anticipate doing, now that we have a four-club cluster here in Connecticut, we anticipate having some great team competitions among the membership from the different clubs, and maybe Woodbridge members will be able to fly their flag as having won our Connecticut championship or something like that. We really think we can get creative with the tournament schedules and the home-and-away competitions, and it can get fun. Now that we have, you know, we have, we're paired off two by two, it can be a cool rotation. So, still working on some of those schedules and what that looks like. But that is the overview of what we see as an out-of-the-gate, good membership product. We have certainly looked to price these to sell. Undervaluing this is a good miss if we were to miss low. It's better than missing high and having to retract our pricing. So, coming out of the gate aggressive, having these prices be limited till April 30th gives us an implied cap on that. We can always adjust and make changes if we think, you know, if we sell 100 of these in a weekend, boy, you know, okay, there's an opportunity to take a look, and that next 100 can be a different pricing. So, I think this is the right start. We want to try to build that loyalty, get the product out into the market, and really hit a home run with it.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. First, members at your other courses would receive that same $20 members fee at Woodbridge?
Yeah, and that might not necessarily be the final program, and they might also, they might not necessarily be equal among the courses. Each course's relative rate has to be taken into consideration. So, if, you know, Course A is $30 more expensive than Course B, then there needs to be some equitable distribution of that benefit. And this is something that we would propose to all of our clients you included for your approval prior to implementing.
All right. And then another question, just about logistics. How soon would this become, assuming this is approved, it comes to this board with unanimous approval from the commission, how soon would this be turned into a formal price list? And how do people reach you? You've been on television for the last 15 minutes.
I'm not telling you what to do. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you reach us? Stop by the golf course. We have people there, and you can also get, you know, any of our phone numbers, the golf course should be active. I think we were working on that today. AT&amp;T was having a few logistical challenges getting them reactivated, but I think we're close, so hopefully by tomorrow. We are planning on opening the golf course on Thursday, so that'll be exciting. So, we hope that...
65-degree weather.
65-degree weather, and...
So, you're going to chew to 65?
Depends on how many holes you want to play. But we can guarantee 65. We just don't have to ask you to leave after 11 holes. But we will have this put together into a very manageable flyer for distribution for potential members to come and pick up. But if you say go, we're ready to sell these effective tomorrow. We've already programmed, and we've gotten a temporary register in place while we're waiting for our POS system to be finalized. And we've already got the categories of these built out, and we're ready to start processing these transactions. So, you're welcome.
And could you include all this information on the sheet, the options as well, so there'd be one sheet with all this information?
Probably have a rate sheet that is for the daily fee guest, and then a membership sheet, so that this doesn't become a...
But you have one sheet where it's all set forth, so there's no misunderstanding. In other words, like we have resident, you might have an asterisk, includes former Woodbridge Country Club members.
Yes.
The options about the locker, the bag storage.
Yes.
So, because historically, we've gotten, what I would say, inquiries that there seemed to be an inconsistency in the pricing.
Right.
That was the claim anyways.
Okay.
For everyone's benefit, to have this one document that says...
One version of the truth, right?
That's right.
Yeah, absolutely. And that'll be something that'll be available to everyone. We will have the opportunity to reach out through some of our partner channels. While we don't really have a database of golfers yet for Woodbridge that we have access to, through our relationship with Golf Now or other golf industry relationships we have in Connecticut, we can access a pretty broad database of people to just get the news out that we're open, that we have products to sell, and get going. We will also draft, once these are approved, we will draft a press release. How often it gets picked up is, you know, hit or miss, but we'll draft a press release about this, and we'll also get an ad campaign going in the local newspapers that start to promote these rates of memberships as well.
And the website?
Yeah. So, we're going to have your own website?
Our own website's being developed. We've reached out to Golf Channel Solutions, who had hosted the former website, to understand what that, where that is, if that's in flux with the prior operator, and we can have that website pointed to our new URL that we've acquired. The new URL, which is not active yet, but it's going to be countryclubofwoodbridge.com. Prior to that, it was thecountryclubofwoodbridge.com. We hope that in some point in the future, maybe we can secure that, but right now, we're moving forward on the countryclubofwoodbridge.com. And we're working with Golf Now and Golf Channel Solutions about some of, because they have the website hosted right now while we're still building our platform. So, we'll use that as a communication vehicle to the degree that we can.
Susan?
Just to follow on what you said, Ed, about being consistent with what these prices are. This is preseason pricing that you're likely, it's only going to be good through April 30th, correct?
Correct. These rates will probably be introduced in the next couple of days with an additional discount to allow for the wintertime.
I'm more concerned about the person who shows up on May 1st, who, there will be a different kind of pricing more likely at that point, because then you'll really be in the season.
Right, unless we find that this is the right pricing, and then we would continue this.
Just looking for clarity.
Yeah. I do think what we want to do is, once we've established and understand how our pricing's been received in the marketplace, is we want, you know, we typically want to commit to your pricing for a golf season. So, it's on point, we don't want to give a message to the guests that we're continuing to change things.
Right.
I think we know that we're, we know that we've recommended some substantial changes to what's been done in the past here, and we're, this is our confidence in saying that we think this is right, we think we can go out and hit a home run with this. But we also want to provide some opportunity to reevaluate and see how it went.
Which is exactly why we want the player ready.
Right.
Thank you.
Were there discussions about locker room access to the pool and tennis only members?
Yeah, well, we, as far as renting a locker? Or just access under...
$75 fee?
Yeah, people wanted to rent a locker. I mean, I don't imagine, we have plenty of locker space, so I don't imagine that it would be a problem with renting lockers to pool or tennis members. I know that what we want to take a look at as we get the pool ready to open is making sure that the changing rooms and bathrooms out at the pool are high-quality enough and kept up enough so that people aren't unnecessarily walking through the clubhouse if they don't have to. One, I don't think parents want their children walking into a clubhouse out of their sight unnecessarily. If the facility's out there adequate, great. So, we want to clean that up and make that look more presentable, but certainly, if pool and tennis members want to buy the lockers, yeah, we welcome that.
Any other questions?
Any choices you have on hires for superintendent? Who are the key people that you have to...
We can discuss our general manager. We had a conversation with the commission last night, and since he worked for us, there is insensitivity to his name. We weren't in a position to discuss the name of the candidates of the superintendents because they did not currently work for us. So, that was a matter we discussed last night in executive session. We are pleased to announce that our general manager's name is Jason Beffert. Jason was our head golf professional up at Lyman Orchards. He worked for us for a number of years. He has been a fantastic performer for us over a number of years. He was awarded our Head Golf Professional of the Year Award two years ago. That's a tough award to get. We have over 130 facilities, so, you know, winning that among our group is something I know he's proud of. He's familiar with the marketplace. He's been up here in Connecticut for four years, and he's actually been on the ground working the last couple of days at Woodbridge. So, he's excited to get on board, and we think he's really going to be a good fit and a good asset to the town. On the superintendent side, we had conversations with a candidate who then has since withdrawn, and we're going to look to move forward with our second candidate, who we felt was equally qualified, and we hope to have that position filled by the end of the week.
Pool director?
Sorry?
Pool director?
Pool director. We've been made aware of the gentleman who's run the pool in the past, so we are eager to discuss, to meet him and have a conversation with him. We've heard nothing but rave reviews about him, so that's our first point of contact is to meet with him. I think he was actually really helpful in getting us a list of former members so that we could start to reach out. So, he's already shown value, and that reference from the people with whom we spoke is, means a lot. So, we're looking forward to getting to know him better.
And the other staffing, Brian, just explain how it would be, they would be a general?
Now that our general manager and superintendent will be on board within the coming days, we've gotten a lot of calls and inquiry from people who used to work here and some people who are interested in work. We've got a job posting out for some food and beverage staff and other staff, so we'll get those positions filled quickly. You know, everyone else, we'll have a mechanics position to fill. Everyone else will be, for the most part, seasonal staff at that point, so we'll be staffing our, excuse me, our golf shop, staffing our starter and ranger and outside services corps, as well as whatever food and beverage staff we need. And then as we get closer to, you know, later in April, we'll start to plan out the pool we need, and then as we get closer to, you know, later in April, we'll start to plan out the pool staff with the pool director and get that ramped up for a late May opening, and then the maintenance crew, you know, will be staffed with the superintendent coming on board very quickly. All of that'll happen very soon. There's still a, a graduated scale of bringing these people on, we're still here, you know, it's March, early March and golf courses that we've been operating for years are operating on skeleton crews right now, because that's, that's just part of the seasonality of the business, so we have a number of general managers and superintendents who are not looking forward to Thursday's weather, because they'll be working by themselves for most of the day and that's just the nature of, of northeast golf with, you have to kind of bear the weight of the good days on your back a little bit, because you don't have budgets to, to have some additional staff. We'll bring in staff as needed, we have other people from other golf courses coming over the weekend. We've had a few people from other golf courses down here helping us get transition. A gentleman from Wittenbury was very helpful in getting us, getting us back on track with, with some of the phones and a lot of things. We've gotten some merchandise brought down from other clubs and gotten the shop, you know, ready to be filled and nice and have some things ready for sale, so we expect that over the next two weeks, you'll see a tremendous amount of activity and as we get into the mid-March period is when our real seasonal staff will start to show up and get those positions filled out. So.
The budget that you had, we, we saw last time we, we met with you, is that something you're still working on now that you have rates and are you, is, is that, is there a revised version of that or?
There is a revised version that was in draft form, that I believe is going to be reviewed, we reviewed it last night and the one change to it, or a substantial change, is that, is that the one that you saw was on a calendar year and the town operates on a fiscal year, so we had to convert it over to a fiscal schedule. So the one that you saw had both a two thousand and twelve stub, we call it a stub year, and then it had a two thousand and thirteen full year. So what we've had to do is kind of marry the, the assumptions from July through December of two thousand and twelve with the assumptions of January through Ju, uh, June of two thousand and thirteen, so what you have is kind of the blend of both in the, in the revised projection for us. But it's very consistent from, with what we said we were able to do with the rounds levels and the revenue levels and things like that.
So you're gonna submit that to the golf commission and then they're gonna review it and make any revisions that they think might be appropriate, and then they will submit that to the Board of Selectmen and then to the Board of Finance and hopefully that'll be done within the next-
Yeah, and that is-
Two weeks or something?
That is the fiscal, that's the fiscal, fiscal two thousand and thirteen budget. We still owe Mr. Genovese, we still owe him a four-month stub operating budget to get us from here, from here to there and we're finalizing that over the weekend and we'll have that. And now we also working on a cash flow projection to make sure that we're mindful of that, so we were all set up with respect to, and Ryan's gonna give a little bit of a logistical update in a moment, but we're all set up as far as bank accounts and, you know, we're ready to go, so.
Okay, are there any more questions of Brian? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and twelve rates as submitted on the sheet.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good through April thirtieth.
Through April thirtieth, yes. Any discussion? If all of us are in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Passing unanimously, thank you very much, Brian. And now, is it, is it Ryan's turn or?
Ryan's gonna give a brief update, as you know, Ryan's our regional manager and he's overseeing the day-to-day club operations with Jason, so yeah, look forward to him giving an update kind of on what we've been doing and what's coming and-
Yeah, I'll, I'll make this brief.
Is it Ryan's fault?
Ryan's fault. So we, we took over on March first, first thing we did was get keys to the facility and then started working on turning out the telephones and the internet, which has been a little bit challenging, just, just making, going from deadlines and, and old accounts and switching those over to our accounts, so those are in the process. The phones are supposed to be working yesterday, I think they're still not way up yet, AT&amp;T's been up there several times, so we hope to have those on tomorrow, which will then allow us to make tee time reservations, so we're, we're excited about getting that done quickly. As far as the internet goes, same story, internet is, is coming soon. We've investigated a couple of options, the quickest one, cable vision isn't gonna work for our credit card needs, so we're gonna have to go to a different system, it's a broad view system with a little more capability, so we're sourcing that quickly. We set up bank accounts, vendor accounts with a credit application from the town. That, that was big, we needed to get a signed credit application, or credit sheet that we can submit to vendors, so that we can order products and merchandise, supplies even on the maintenance side. Sourcing a GM and super, that's taken some time, we, we interviewed several GM candidates to come with, to come to Jason, so we've, we've got that done, Jason's now working. I told him pretty much seven days a week until I tell him otherwise. And I wasn't joking, but, you know, he's gonna be there pretty much every day for March, digging in, so he's very excited to get, to get on board and we're excited to have him. The next thing we needed was golf carts. We threw national accounts with Club Car and Easy Go, we requested a quote on seventy-five electric golf cars and five gas-powered utility carts. In the meantime, we've ordered twenty-four gasoline-powered cars that were delivered on Saturday, so we have those, we're ready to go. We think twenty-four is a good number for March, it might not be good for Thursday, just in the sense of, those spike days with that weather is gonna be a little bit of organized chaos, just in the, in the very beginning until we get the entire fleet. But, but we wanted to get those so that we could be able to go. And the next things are, are, are the, the systems that we bring from our, from our Virginia support office, which is a T-sheet, building a T-sheet for Woodbridge with appropriate starting times and ending times, and the point-of-sale system, getting computers designed and loaded with a point-of-sale system, which can handle the inventory that we're, that we're putting in there. And then the last things are redesigning the logo, which went to our design firm, which is, is all part of the budget. We've gotten five drafts of the logo so far, so we, we look forward to being able to present that very quickly, because what that'll allow us to do is the, the scorecards and the apparel that we want to have logo, logo balls, et cetera, so I'll look forward to getting an approved logo from the committee quickly. We should have something to share with them soon. And that's it, we're excited to be, uh, open and on Thursday and pray that doesn't sell for-
Matt's also prepared to give just a brief overview of what we've been working on the golf course, unless you have any questions for Ryan.
Any question to Ryan?
Just a quick one, remind me, how does, how does the account, how do the accounts interface with the town? Your accounting with the town accounting?
They are, the accounts are opened in the names of our entity.
Right.
The officers are senior officers of our company. Woodbridge Golf Management is a single-purpose entity that's operating the golf course on your behalf and the accounts are opened in that entity's name. Tony Genovese has full access to those accounts whenever he would like to have them, so we provide you with, I think we're providing with online access and everything, so he has that, but, but the accounts are, yeah, the accounts are controlled by our entity.
By the LLC that you created for this purpose?
Correct, correct. And all the reconciliation with the financial statements that we'll provide on a monthly basis and balance sheets, we'll, we can include bankruptcy, we can include whatever, whatever information you'd like to see for us to reconcile the activity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, on the golf course, we have had some fun out there, we've had some, a, a few guys have come from other golf courses to help out, as we try to source the superintendent and get, get him on board. We do not have any equipment at the facility right now, but we have, we had some guys step up and, and trail or some equipment up and they went around and, and blew debris and picked up sticks and just generally tried to get the tees and green surfaces as tidy as they could be. Core supplies, tee markers, cups, flags, flag sticks, things of that nature, proximity markers, one fifty poles for the, for the fairways, have all been ordered and drop shipped to Oxford Greens, which is about fifteen minutes from here. I will be picking those up tomorrow and placing them appropriately. We hope to have our superintendent ready to go on no later than Monday and for the time being, we will have some supplemental labor from other support networks that will come out and meet the needs of the golf course and-
You're looking at three of them.
Yeah. And I have, I have tightened up an equipment package for the town's approval. We have, I've worked with, with three different vendors to put together a combination package that I think will meet every need of the golf course and fits within the constructs of the budget. We have agreements from each of the vendors, should we need short-term loaner equipment to get us one, two, three pieces as needed, to get us through the short term. Most of the, most of the major equipment will be available within seven to ten days of when the, when the equipment package is approved. There will be one or two pieces that will take a little longer lead time, so I look forward to sending that to Mr. Genovese tonight and certainly Deke and getting approval for that as, as you all see fit.
We'll present that with financing recommendations and, you know, with the terms that we're able to provide and you can compare that with what terms you're able to get and, and make that decision together. So we're excited to be here, we're, a lot still has to happen, we've gotten a lot done. We've been excited, really excited to see some of the former members and guests come walking in and, you know, knowing that golf season's right here and, and that's been fun. I fielded a call about a league on my way up here that played at another course in Washington, over at Woodbridge, heard about things, so, you know, we're fielding all of that and Ryan described it very well, it's, it's organized chaos, but that's, you know, it's, that's everywhere right now, so we're all excited about that. We're getting, having fever from the winter, even though it's been a mild one, so thank you for all the support you've given us so far.
Thank you.
Okay.
See you then. Who wants first tee time?
I think Phyllis Genal said she would.
That's true. Actually, she wants to be the first member, she wants to be the first member.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, okay? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Visiting Nurse Association and we have with us Janine Fay.
And Joanne Bagley.
Joanne Bagley, okay, and I, I met with Janine and Mary Ellen LaRocque a couple of weeks ago and they filled me in on all the services that VNA offers to Woodbridge and so I thought it'd be a good idea for you to come and to tell the Board of Selectmen and our television audience about what the VNA offers to Woodbridge.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to be here and appreciate the opportunity. Joanne is casting around a packet and we also have a brochure around and I want to start with, our name is VNA Community Healthcare. VNA's get confused, they're not all one big umbrella, it's different businesses. The way most people know us is the four blocks on our brochure. It's often not the name people recognize, it's just the logo, which is, is fine by us. So VNA Community Healthcare actually acquired VNA Services a couple of years ago and that was the VNA that formally supported services in Woodbridge. Since that time, we have gotten to know, and Joanne in particular has worked with the Senior Center and Mary Ellen and other people in town and just to give you an overview of what we do, we do have the traditional home care services. If you look inside this brochure, there's a list in the middle. Traditional home care services are things like nursing and physical and occupational therapy, social work services, for people who maybe came out of the hospital, had surgery, had a medical event where they need some support services at home, sometimes for a short period of time, sometimes for a much longer period of time. We are certainly seeing that as people age and there's more chronic illness that's treated for the long haul, what we need to do is help people manage their health better and we really have been focusing on some very particular initiatives in looking at what the data is on what in our world is called evidence-based practices, but basically saying the research says doing these particular things will have a better outcome for that person. So we are really looking at implementing as many of those practices that are out there. Home care has never been an industry which a lot of research or attention has been paid to until the last few years, when more people are staying at home and want to be home, so we're happy to, to support that. In addition to the, the direct services that we provide in the home, we really do believe we're a community-driven organization and we want to be a resource to the communities that we serve and so we do a lot of things, programs, caregiver support. I'm gonna let Joanne kind of walk you through some of the things that, that we're able to offer and different ways people can contact us and, and get information. We certainly, as I said, believe in being that resource, so even though somebody might not need direct home care services at the moment, but they're struggling with how to, to manage a particular health issue, then we're happy to have people call and we can direct them as needed.
As Janine said, educating the community and being involved in the communities we serve is a very big part of what we do, so each spring and fall, we offer free and low-cost programs on a variety of topics. Some are specific to seniors, some are general wellness programs and some are specific to family caregivers. I work very closely with Lee Canning at the Senior Center and I'm also on the Triad Committee with Mary Ellen and participated in the program on disaster preparedness that took place in January, that was very well attended and a representative from our private affiliate was part of the, the panel. Also, we have done several programs in Woodbridge on topics such as food safety, staying at home for the long haul, fall prevention, and there are many more that are, are coming up in the spring. One of the main programs that we offer to family caregivers is called our Caregiver Support Network and that was started ten years ago, when we held a series of focus groups asking family members in the community what they needed from their VNA and the Caregiver Support Network came about as a result of those focus groups and what it offers is, again, educational programs specific to caregivers, one-on-one consultation, caregiver support groups and a helpline. Over the years, it's grown and expanded to meet the needs of caregivers and the helpline is available Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to four-thirty, and we welcome calls on a variety of topics. A lot of times, when a person calls us, they may be in crisis mode and we try to be that calm voice on the other end of the phone that could kind of help them with whatever their issue may be, whether it's navigating the healthcare system, which is very difficult for people these days, or just knowing what Medicare D-plan to, to choose. We get calls from one extreme to another and we welcome them all. Another thing that we're doing with our caregiver network is expanding it to specifically meet the needs of caregivers with chronic illness, care, I'm sorry, caregivers of family members with chronic illness, such as heart disease, lung disease, or diabetes, and it's in keeping with the program that Janine mentioned to help reduce hospital readmissions and this component will offer patients further support in the community once they're discharged from home care and when a family member is ill, it affects the whole family, so the caregiver piece is a very huge part of it.
What's the number on that, the helpline?
The helpline, there's, I actually-
If you just read it out.
Oh, sure. It's eight-six-six-four-seven-four-five-two-three-oh.
And it's toll-free.
Yes, toll-free, yes.
So we do encourage people to call if there's questions, you know, we, we really do feel like we have a, a service to offer and the, the healthcare system's pretty confusing these days and people don't really know which direction to head and, and we're happy to, to be that resource.
So you can help people navigate through the healthcare system-
Right, right.
Explain to them alternatives and options if they have. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Do you do any annual flu clinics?
We do, we do flu clinics, we do blood pressure clinics, we actually are starting to look at expanding a nurse, nursing clinic where it can be sort of a health coaching model for people with diabetes or heart disease, but we do do those kinds of, and certainly encourage people to get their flu shot. It's an important prevention.
Have you ever done one here, Chris?
We did.
There'll be one this year?
Mm-hmm. And we hope everybody comes.
And we do two blood pressure clinics here each month as well.
Each month?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is pesticides use on a ton of property and Adam Parsons is here. You want to come up, Adam?
Sure.
We, we met about a, a month ago or so and we had some discussion about the pesticide use. And maybe, Adam, you can summarize your position on this, regarding pesticide use. And we can take it from there. I know David Schneider is here and Sheila McCraven is here. Maybe others were here.
At first, when I first heard about the pesticide ban on my, on the fields, I was pretty, you know, taken back from it. But after talking to Mr. and Mrs. Schneider and going to several seminars, it truly hit me right in the chest about how bad pesticides can be. So, now I'm on this other swing that with organics, I think it's a good thing. And I put together a budget, which I don't know if you guys have. Have you seen it?
We have seen it.
Have you seen it?
Yes.
And Tony and I have worked together on it. We've made a little bit of changes. And I think it's a good thing that we do it basically completely of all baseball fields. There is something that I've changed a little bit that I, I personally would like to keep on using Roundup in the, at the cemetery to keep the headstones from being injured with weed whacker. It destroys this, this old stone on the headstones. That's not a good thing. So, and the amounts that I'd be using is so limited. And then use it on the flower beds in the center of town. It's not the baseball fields. There's no children playing at the cemetery. You know, there's no one in the gardens. It's a very limited amount and it would eliminate the cost of all labor, extra labor, that I first thought that would be an additional cost to the town. So, that's a big savings. That savings is, went from fourteen thousand dollars all the way down, that could be to zero if we still keep on using Roundup at the cemetery and the gardens around the center of town, not the ball fields. No pesticides on the ball fields, none whatsoever. Completely organic. So, that's about it.
Adam, how many cemeteries do we have?
Just one.
Just one?
That I maintain.
That you maintain?
Yeah.
Okay.
On sixty-seven?
It's owned by the town.
Is that the northwest one?
Yeah.
Okay. And the others, east side and all?
On the Peace Road?
Yeah, those are private, okay. Okay.
There, it's, it's a newer, this cemetery on sixty-seven, there's some stones in the back there that are quite old, in the seventeen hundreds. And the stones are deteriorated pretty bad. And I, it's due to weed whacking. And some of them have cracked and fallen down. If, you know, you hit it with the, a soft stone like that, it's not granite. It just destroys it.
So, your, your recommendation, Adam, is to exclude the one cemetery, Northwest Cemetery, and the area around the town center here?
That's correct.
But include all, all the ball fields?
That's correct. And keep in mind, I won't be anywhere near daycare. There's state law that you have to be a hundred and fifty feet away from anywhere near daycare. I will not be spraying it anywhere near the, any of the kids that are playing ball out here, ball, you know, ball games. This is only the beds around certain areas in the town. And it's very small amounts. It's very, very small, like two tanks a year. That's it. But the ball fields, zero pesticides, all are organic. There's, it's organic insecticide control. And there's, I'm asking for an overseeder, an increase in, you know, for seed. The key to keeping the grass green, I think, is overseeding, overseeding, overseeding. Because there's, that's the only defense that I have, one defense. I mean, there's other little things that, that come in mind, but you have to keep on keeping, keeping grass growing continually in the really heavily used areas, right in the center of the field. So, it's almost like my, the recommendation that I've been taught is that you got to put down a small application of seed every week, just, just in the playing areas and just to keep grass growing there. So, hopefully, it'll, it'll work. And I've talked to other superintendents and other grounds managers and that's what they do. So, that's what we're going to have to do.
So, is this different from the budget that we have from our line item transfer that we're looking at?
The line item transfer that you have is for the equipment?
Right, we were talking about-
There was a forty.
Labor, fifty-seven hundred and sixty. We're talking about the overseeder. We're talking about-
Yeah, we're going to need-
What's the-
Right?
Twenty-two eight.
The, the transfer is, that's for the overseeder and the equipment?
We're going to need those.
Right. So, is it twenty-two eight? Does this include, we were talking about only the limited use of Roundup around the cemetery and around the firehouse and places like that?
Yeah.
That labor is gone or is-
It's gone, literally.
The fifty-seven hundred and sixty is gone?
It's gone.
So, this twenty-two eight is less. So, this-
It's going to be less.
So, the twenty-two eight, just so we're clear, that's for the insect sprayed overseeder in the storage trailer.
This is to-
Okay, that's the twenty-two eight. It's attached.
That's right.
Okay. The additional monies for the fertilizer and the seed and such were not transferred yet until there was some sort of decision, partly because this fiscal year ends in a few months. And I wasn't sure how much supply he actually needed until July one. So, there, there's some timing issues with funding the supplies. And, and of course, the labor is, of course, if you use Roundup in the areas he indicated, labor would no longer be, which is not on here. It's attached to the funding request and we'll get later, later on in the program here.
So, the amount, so you had said, I think we talked about last time, it's, the organic is two to one, basically.
It is.
So, price for that, then the overseeding, the top of that.
Then I have to spray a nematode for the control of grubs and water it in. Spray it and water it in. And they get inside the grub and kill them. Doesn't hurt any environmental part, there's no environmental problems with it. No problems with, because there's another nematode that eats grass, but that is totally different, completely. Don't figure.
This is like a cycle where it might take, does it take a couple of years for really the organic to, to be really supporting itself?
It does. It will, hopefully.
Is it two years? Is it three years? Is that?
If you don't deviate from it, they say it's one year, you'll see a difference. It'll take time to build up what used to be in the soil. Supposedly, the pesticides that I've been using is, is basically killed everything in the soil. So, the microorganisms has to replenish itself and organic fertilizer does that in time. Clippings, when you, you don't pick up the clippings that say a golf course might, you know, buckets and they dump them and they get rid of the clippings. It's very important to keep the clippings there and let it go back into the soil. So, very important.
And what are these nematodes?
They're microscopic worms-
Yeah.
That, that get inside the grub and kill them.
And this is statistically effective? You believe this is, this will be effective with grubs? They kill them?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're not bringing in something that's going to-
Kill the grass.
Because I mean, there've been other places where you bring in one organism to kill off another organism and then that organism takes over and now you've got-
It's been out a few years now.
Or, now you've got another problem. So, you bring in one living thing to kill off another living thing and then that becomes an issue.
There's been good results from it. So, I mean, there's, there's no-
How long has the nematode solution, how, how long has the nematode solution been out there?
Probably about ten years, I would say. Yeah. And no one's really used it that much. I mean, there's people that use it. There's people that swear by organics. There's some people that, pesticides, they're just to swear by pesticides. Pesticides is easy. You apply it and you forget it. But the underlying thing is it, it, you know, this runoff and the children might get, you know, cancer from it.
I will, I mean, I understand all that.
Yeah, I mean, nobody wants it running down into the ocean and, and anywhere of a sort. It's a good thing. And hopefully, it'll go to the homeowners eventually. Because the homeowners, in my eyes, are the uneducated people. They just buy and put it down. We're the professionals and we've been educated for years. We know how to do it. It's the homeowners, it's the problem. There's a lot of money involved in that, billions of dollars that companies are making because of homeowners. And it's hard to fight that. Jobs, money.
Well, it's twice the cost.
I have a question.
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
The cemetery-
Right.
I'm not quite sure how to put this. We're clearly not concerned about the people at the cemetery. Be with me on that. Runoff is still runoff. So, whether you apply it at a cemetery or in the middle of a football field, there's still the issue of runoff, the aquifer and the groundwater and contaminating the water. So, I guess the first question is, you know, that's still an issue if you're using Roundup at the cemetery. And the second question is, with respect to the various, I think you meant flower beds, right, around the center? That's not a hundred and fifty feet from the daycare center, right?
It will be because I've measured it. I know for a fact because I, even when I used the Roundup, I've measured a hundred and fifty feet from that building, both entrances. And I've completely-
Well, I'm not familiar enough to know with the standard. Is the standard coming in fit, for children? Is the issue coming in direct contact? I mean, the water issue is still the water issue there. No matter, I'm sorry. No matter where you're doing it, the water issue is still the water issue.
Okay.
So, with respect to children, young children like that, is the issue them also coming into contact with these various substances? Because if that's true, it seems to me that these daycare kids and any other kid who happens to be in the area may potentially still come in contact. Can you just address those two points that I made?
Well, what I usually, what I always do is you spray Roundup on a really dry sunny day. Because when you spray it, you want it to dry immediately.
So, it, we evaporate?
You don't want it to evaporate. You want it to dry on the leaf blade-
Okay.
To have control of killing the weed. And you spray it early in the morning before anybody does anything. And I've actually come here and not even punched in and sprayed Roundup in the center of town in certain areas. So, it dries immediately. That's, that's the key. You have to let it dry immediately. You can't, you don't do it at twelve o'clock or kids are walking around the town or, or at the end of the day. Or you don't do it on cloudy days. You just don't do it. That's where education is key. Where a homeowner, he just does it on any day. You don't do it if you see rain coming. It's a sunny, no wind, extremely dry day. That's when you apply it.
So, you're saying that by doing it that way, it has the least amount of impact-
Correct.
On the groundwater?
Correct. And there's other things you do. You don't spray when the flowers, certain flowers are in bloom. You don't do that because you don't want to be spraying bees that are harvesting. Usually bees don't harvest early in the morning. They usually harvest in the middle of the day. So, the morning is the key. So, there's many techniques to do what I'm doing. So, it limits from somebody touching it or drift or, or it getting wet. You don't want to, you don't want to be spraying it and all of a sudden, three days down the line, it's going to rain three days. You don't do that. I don't want to do that. Nobody wants to do that. So, all these things that I'm thinking about this when applying these pesticides.
Well, it's a very thoughtful way to approach it. I-
Well, that's what I've been trained, you're trained, I'm trained extensively in this. It's not like a homeowner who just goes up to Home Depot and buys Roundup and they're shooting it like a gun in the driveway.
It's a torch.
It doesn't work that way.
Yeah, okay. I got you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Adam, the, the recommendation that had come out of rec was this, you know, start with two fields.
Right.
Can you just speak to a little bit? I, I had thought that made sense only because I figured, as much as you know about these topics, you'd probably learn a ton in two years. And that's why I was thinking, are you worried? You're not worried at all about field?
No, because I've told Tony and Ed that I, there's only a couple of things that can happen to a field, or three things. One, they play the, they play it so much that they beat the heck out of the grass dies, which you probably, probably see if you go out on the field, in the center of the field, it's dead in the middle of the field. You can't do anything. Insect problem and crabgrass takeover. Crabgrass is bad. That being said, I still can overseed and still do all these practices to make, I'm trying to grow grass out there. That's what I'm doing. So, if I foresee a problem coming, I'm just going to go to Tony and Ed and say, listen, I'm going to lose this field or something's happening here that we might have to use pesticides or close a field for a couple of weeks till I, you know, overseed the seed comes up. And that's it. That's it. It's not, it's not rocket scientist, you know? I'm not going to lose a field. Definitely not. You'll see grub damage around the outer, outer skirts of the ball field, but you won't see it on the playing surface. All you see is wear and tear. That's what I'm saying. And maybe, and hopefully, the way I see it, the grass is going to be better off and the grass is going to look better and play better. And it'll be better than you can imagine. That's my goal, to be better than it is now. So, when you guys go up to center of a lagging ball field, you just go, oh, it smokes. Adam's doing it right. That's what I want to be. And I'm not going to, I'm going to do everything I possibly can to make it, you know, be perfect. And this is a good start. These are the tools that I need right here to get that ball rolling. So, I'm very confident that we're not going to lose a ball field at all. So, that's why I'm recommending completely organic on the ball fields immediately. Without even saying, okay, let's keep acorn, that's a laggy, let's keep, you know, using pesticides. And I have other colleagues that I could talk to about it. So, we're all, we're all in the same program here with my, my friends. They're all in the process of growing organic. And that's from, you know, myself, parks supervisors, the golf course superintendents. It's changing and it's changing fast. And like you said, like I said, New York is, you can't get anything bigger than New York in their ball fields. And they've been successful. They're doing a great job. So, I don't have a problem with it whatsoever.
Any other questions or comments? I know what David and Virginia Snyder are here. You want to make any comments?
I think some of what we had to say really was probably responsive to what Sheila's going to say. It might make sense for her to first.
Sheila, would you like to come forward?
Sure. So, Laura Fernandez-Ferrar did say she was going to come and I don't know if she'll show up, but what's going on? So, COOPOP did take this up at a special meeting on Friday evening and I forwarded to you the comments that they made. Their, the recommendation from the Committee on the Use of Publicly Owned Property kind of fall into two categories. I would say primarily that COOPOP itself would like to be charged with the responsibilities inherent in the policy. And then secondarily, we had some suggestions for changes and we were thinking that, two things. We were thinking that using public property to make the very important point that we all need to be moving away from pesticides, we think is a proper use of public property. We hope that the selectmen agree. It seems as though you do agree with that. And using the property to be educational for everyone else who lives in the town. Of course, we can't tell private property owners what they can and can't put on their grass. But if we can demonstrate that your grass will be okay, your lawn will be okay, your flower beds will be okay, without the use of pesticides, I think we go a long way to, towards getting to the goal of the town itself going pesticide-free the entire, you know, everyone who lives here as well as the town-owned property. Because obviously, if it gets into the watershed, doesn't matter whose land it came off of, it got into everybody's watershed. So, we're trying to eliminate that. That being said, the concern that COOPOP voiced was that if we move ahead with the policy and it backfires in any way, it really damages the ability to persuade people that they should do this with their property. So, our concern was not, we're not trying to limit the scope of going pesticide-free. We actually are completely in favor of that goal as far as the committee goes. But what we want to make sure is, is that it's, there's a very thoughtful approach to it and it's managed. And the other item that we discussed was that there's a lot of property that does not fall into category of a playing field or a cemetery. I know we've talked about those and we've talked about the, the areas around the town buildings. But the town also owns a lot of, of property throughout the town. And we thought it would be really great to be able to promote that, to- be really great to be able to promote that to everyone who lives in town, to say, we have a couple acres here and a couple acres there and a couple acres there and it's all pesticide free or it will be on, you know, whatever date. We're going to phase everything in. So that was the recommendation coming from COOPOP and you saw the language changes and et cetera. So I can answer any questions you might have about that?
Any questions? Sheila?
The other thing I would note is I happen to be just taking off my COOPOP hat for a moment, but, but talking, I'm a fan of cemeteries because I do genealogy research. And I do know that there's, I'm very hopeful that there will be a way to phase in pesticide free cemeteries as well because there's a group called the Connecticut Gravestone Association that will come. They'll give you a seminar about how to restore the stones that are already damaged, how to prevent damage in the future and weed whacking is absolutely one of the damages. But they tend to use the sort of organic principle of pine needles. If you clear out around the base of the stone and you put down pine needles, it keeps grass from growing that you would then have to weed whack. So I do think that there's, I, I think there, there are examples that we'll probably get from townspeople who have thought of ways that we could go pesticide free even further than we're taking it right now. So that is, that's my two cents from COOPOP.
Thank you.
Thanks.
David, Virginia?
A couple of things that hopefully make this a lot quicker than last time. Has everybody gotten a copy of the well study?
Statist.
Okay, because I know that's been around and I think that's an important part of this puzzle. And, and the other thing is, I take it you all got a copy of, of the memo that I-
It's in your package, yes.
It's in your package. I have a few other copies if people don't have it with them, but I think the thing is that it's, it's been very good that there's been such strong support for eliminating pesticides. And, and quite frankly, I, I think we're down to two issues. One is how fast do we do it? And the other is the question of pest management committee and who ought to be that. So I'm going to deal with those too quickly and they're both in that memo. But I think, I do want to kind of, it seems like some people, and I've heard this since this last meeting, seem to suggest that, that my wife and I kind of came up with this idea and we threw it to the selectmen the last meeting and, and that clearly is not what happened. I mean, there's been a lot of thought, a lot of time spent on this and Joe knows that. And, and I think unfortunately, I think maybe some of the REC committee and some of COOPOP that thought that, you know, this was just our thought and I, that's why I tried to show that that's not true. And, and I know because we were at the meeting of COOPOP on Friday night, I've seen Sheila's, what I call rather massive rewriting of the policy. And I think I can deal with the substantive, but a lot of it seems to me to be kind of waffling a bit on how serious the problem is. I'm really glad that she just said, no, it's a bad problem, we need to deal with it. But I mean, some of the things where we say, you know, it is a problem, is changed to say, well, some people say it's a problem. And I, I just don't think we need to do that if we're going to be educational about it. But the first, and I did one thing, one thing before I forget it on cost because Kenefick raised this. A lot of towns have found that, and relatively quickly, that the cost for what is being used is, is, is less even than it had been before because you build up the soil and you're not having to use that. So I, I know that's a concern, but I think there's other suggestions that this is not a major concern. I ended up with about nine reasons why it seems to me that we need to do all the fields at the same time rather than this, this test it out theory. And quite frankly, that was before I knew Adam was going to say the same thing. So, but what I think is important is that those who want what they call phase in or try it out or two fields, no one has come up with anything that suggests that there's any really reason to do that other than gee, something might happen. I mean, we've shown other fields that have been successful in other towns. We've got Adam, who's a very competent person, saying that he can do this. You know, the state's already banned it on school grounds, so why would we want to keep it on our playing fields? And, and then I think if you've invested in the capital equipment, which is the main cause, then why would you only do two fields instead of all of them? I mean, that, in terms of the cost issue. And the other thing is that the two fields that, that they're proposing be the quote test fields would be West River and Center, which are the ones that are getting the least pesticides now. So it really isn't a very good test. I mean, you can, if, if that's what they really need to do. So I would certainly strongly suggest that we do all the fields. There's, there's really no articulated factual reason not to do so. As to the cemeteries, which just came up tonight, you know, if it's, I mean, I want to have everything out of every place, but I'm also willing to admit that if Adam thinks we need to do that, that's fine. I mean, you know, we'll work on phasing that in too. I mean, that's why we met with Adam and with Warren Conners so many times before because we wanted to try to get at all these issues that might be there. The second thing is that, that what we had in the pest management committee, the thought was that you would have three people be the administrator, the town administrator and two citizens that are knowledgeable about pesticides and pesticide use that could be of aid to the first selectmen and to the board when necessary on, on a variety of issues. It wasn't intended to be some grand new super body that controlled things, but simply to be of assistance. Some people have been concerned about that. And if, if that's a concern, then let's not have the committee at all. I quite frankly, don't think that COOPOP is the answer. I mean, I, I don't think that's what they're designed to do. The other night, they admitted that they had no particular expertise in this and, and I just, I just think that that's kind of shifting it off and, and making conceivably matters worse. So if you don't want to have this kind of simple little committee that we proposed, I would suggest we just eliminate the committee idea and we could, I, I'm sure redraft this policy and, and I know Mr. Weiner and I could get that done with fairly easy. And then if the first selectman or the board felt the need to call in somebody for assistance, they certainly have the powers to do that. So I think that pretty much covers what I had to say. I might certainly be willing to answer any questions. I just think we can't fear something when we got this serious a problem to deal with and, and we need to get on with it.
Do you have anything?
Well, I was just looking when I was waiting here. Magazine has been American Scientist. It's a very highly regarded, Signa Zai, our son and my daughter are both members of Signa Zai, which is, is a prestigious honor. Talking about a book about the body toxic and talks about the fact that Europe makes the companies prove that the chemicals are safer and here, you know, they're, they're innocent until proven guilty so that we really don't know a lot of the effects. And the effects in this book it talks about, they can be a lot smaller effects than, than people realize. So I think we should be erring on the side of using less because there's no risk that way, except for maybe some aesthetics sometimes.
Okay. Any questions of either David or Virginia?
And I guess you all saw all the pictures of the towns that we did visit and the directors of parks that have been very on board. People were skeptical in some of these towns at first and then they got a lot of favorable press.
Listen, I, I don't know whether Bob Hill's going to talk, but I know he did show me something from Cheshire tonight where he's got a report that they have been very happy and have had no problems with their-
I do have one question because there is legislation before the general assembly to repeal aspects of the prohibition of chemical use at, on school property K through eight.
Right.
There is testimony from parks departments and school superintendents or school maintenance people to suggest that their properties are suffering, I guess, as a result of this relative new policy. So I wonder if you would comment on that.
Well, I think-
We've been through this several times before and I know in the past, I believe it's in the last year, it was kind of a trade off. The landscapers pulled this up so that the preemption statute, which allows towns to be stricter, they can sort of offset. And I think in the last legislature, they agreed, we won't push this and you don't push that. So I think it's kind of, they're doing that because they're concerned about this preemption change.
And, and I'm sure that the lobbyists for the pesticide industry can find people that will come in and talk about it. And I mean, I mean, that's what's going on at the state level. I mean, that, that's not what we're doing here tonight. And I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think that we're sophisticated enough that we can avoid this problem.
We also talked with other places in Long Island and Westchester and also the state of New York on their public golf courses. They're going at least integrated pest management, which means greatly reducing stuff. I mean, New York State has K to 12 in their schools for destroyed properties, the playing fields. So they've extended even more and seem to be fine with it. At least the people we've spoken to in this region closer to Connecticut and Westchester and Long Island.
Well, the reason I ask is because as recently as last week, other well meaning volunteer residents maintain reservations about a wholesale move to this policy, especially on, on these, these athletic complexes. The town has no surplus certainly of, of fields. And, and as a percentage of this, the square miles that is Woodbridge, we're not going to, we're not going to make a significant impact, I don't think, on groundwater, at least not the first couple of years. So, and, and maybe Stan and Bob can speak more to this or to the reservations still expressed at the recreation commission as recently as last week. And that, and that may be a more modest approach, which was, I mean, you guys were there that night, so it's no, it's no secret. But a couple of fields for a couple of years to make sure that Adam's IPM, if you want to call it that, approach-
I do IPM now.
Yeah, okay. So, so anyway, so maybe this is the appropriate time to hear from the recreation people who, who still have some questions, I guess.
All right. I think Sheila wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify the COOPOP meeting. I hope it wasn't misunderstood. COOPOP is in favor of the elimination of pesticides and we do take it very, very seriously as I think most townspeople do. I think that we're very representative of that. But I wouldn't want a mischaracterization of, of our viewpoint to go out to say that by expressing these reservations that we have, that the request for it to be phased is more about being very, very careful and very deliberative in what we're doing. And maybe because we serve on a commission, we understand sort of the value of being on a commission more than the member of the general public says, well, what do we need a commission for, for this? I think it's, it's fairly important. I think it's an ongoing concern. So that, that was the objection to say, ADHOC is probably not going to do it. You're going to want this policy to be in place, you know, for a long time. And one of the things expressed at the commission meeting was the interface between a commission and the employees of the town rather than having them directly answer questions, which they may get from all sides. They may have people that are concerned about the state of the ball field, et cetera, et cetera. One of the great things about having a commission is that the employee can say, talk to my commission. Because that's, the commission is representing townspeople and the general concern. So I just want to clarify that our general concern is also we want to eliminate pesticides. We're just looking to do it in a deliberate way.
Okay. Now, seven o'clock was public comments and I see some members here who may be here for that reason or other reasons. But, so if anyone has any comment, if any from the recreation commission wants to come, chime in on this, they're, they're more than welcome.
I'll just echo the, I mean, the REC commission is in full support of the pest, you know, eliminating the pesticides program. We just want to make sure that it's done in a responsible way that we can manage it and it doesn't take too long for us to think back just a couple of years ago when we dealt with the pool issue with the, the drains that we had three bids and in our best effort to save money, we went with the low bidder. And what happened with the low bidder? The low bidder wasn't the right bidder because he wasn't, and I sat right in front of this group and I said, I'd watched a webinar on the, the whole pool thing and said, use a qualified pool person. And we used someone that wasn't, who hired people. And what ended up happening ended up costing us more in the end and the pool was closed for a much longer period of time. We need to make sure that when we do something, and I have full faith that Adam's going to do a great job. I know that, okay? And obviously if it ends up being committed that we do all the fields, well, then he'll be on the firing line of, you know, hearing, you know, from, from us if it's not there. I trust that he'll figure it out, but I am a little concerned and also this whole thing with the hematodes, what impact? And I think that Tom's comment, you know, what do we know about that and what impact that may have? Just a couple of other points. Obviously, we're full support. In relation to the comment on the two fields that are using the least pesticides right now, well, in actuality, that now turns out to being two good choices because in actuality, if those have had the least amount of pesticides on them to this point, those fields should prove out more quickly than the ones that have more. Because there's that transition should take place more quickly if you're going to follow the way, the logic of the, as you start making that transition. When we suggested a two-year test, one of the things we really didn't think about when we suggested that was the fact that the fiscal year for the town is July. So you're, you're also going to deal with an issue, he's going to, Adam's going to start doing whatever he's going to start doing if he hasn't already. And then July comes. So what is 2012? It's kind of an efficient or foul. Is it pesticide free or is it organic? Which is it? Or does he take the materials he has now and use on the remaining fields he can still work on and begin to start purchasing and start working on West River and Center first go around so we have a clear test of what's, what's happening? I did send information to the board of selectmen a few weeks ago on the email that I had sent to the president of the Cheshire Soccer Association. And basically, the real, I know that when this came to us originally, it came to us as ensuring to protect the cancer rates of children, which obviously we're all concerned about. But it was interesting in reading his response and also going to the 2004 report in Cheshire, what drove the concern in Cheshire and, you know, his comments where he didn't think they were higher, I don't know if that's relevant, whether or not he really had that, but was really driving was the groundwater, which is really, should be our main concern here is what's happened to groundwater. They, their issue was a, when you think of Cheshire, you're not thinking about plants, but then you realize, oh, when you get to I-84 and that type of thing, there's a lot of old plants and that type of thing. So that's where their, their focus came. It was mentioned that we've saved a lot of money at Beecher by not having pesticides there. But I, I guess there's a few people here, Greg can probably answer to because I know his kids play baseball over there. I know it's been a few years for you, Lawrence, Tom, I know it's been quite a while for you. And I know Chris Sorensen cuts the lawn over there, I think, right? Okay. So I think that if you check with a few of those people, I think that you'll find that the, the grass at Beecher Road School is almost non-existent to a large extent, to the point that I know that in-
But Adam doesn't take care of it, Chris.
Right. But the issue of the fact that they eliminated, they, they eliminated the pesticides and didn't do anything. I mean, to, to claim that we're saving money there by eliminating it, yeah, we, yeah, we saved money because we stopped doing anything there. There's no overseeding, there's nothing going on there or very limited. And unfortunately now, what do you hear when you watch the, the Woodbridge Board of Ed? They're talking about how are they going to maintain the, all the runoff and all the dirt running off? Well, why is the dirt running off? There's no grass holding it back. So, you know, let's learn from that. When you made the transition, it was right to eliminate the pesticides at Beecher, but you need to make sure that you-
That's a good choice in the state law.
Right, you had to. But what should have happened is the town should have then said, okay, what do we now need to do, just like we're looking at right now? And in actuality, that should be looked at now in terms of what we're dealing with, with Beecher. Just a question, what is the final number being put in the budget right now for this? I know that there's, there's a, there's a capital for the equipment, then there's the materials and then there's a labor component. That labor component won't go away, even though, so you say it'll be less later, that labor component's not going to go away.
According, according to, well, the first, the first answer for your question is tonight on the agenda is a funding, a transfer request for 2020-
According to, well, the first, the first answer to your question is tonight on the agenda is a funding, a transfer request for $22,800. That's for the equipment.
Right.
Okay. According to the budget we've received that we've reviewed with Adam, there's an additional, about $11,000, $10,000, $11,000 in annual costs for additional fertilizer, seeds and insect control.
His question is, there was, there was an amount in the budget for labor-
Yep.
To do this, if you were gonna take care of the cemeteries all around here, $14,000. $14,000, that's up.
That's out, okay. So, that's, that is a concern that, that when we approved it from the Rec Commission, we said you need some materials, the labor and, and the, and the capital to make it happen. The main concern here, you know, obviously you're concerned about kids rolling around that field that potentially would pick this stuff up. But the, the bigger concern should really be groundwater. And if we eliminate it on the fields, I really think it should go to the next step of an education, which I think is Sheila saying about educating the, the public. And it would be nice if the residents could be trained what materials they should be using on their lawn versus what they're using. Because that's kind of a much bigger impact, long-term here in the community than just the few fields that we're, we're looking at. So those were, I mean, we're totally in support of it, we are concerned about, you know, how quickly this, this moves and that Adam has the necessary resources to do what he needs to, to do with the, the fields. Because obviously, it sounds like a lot of this is gonna be, you know, a little bit labor-intensive, so that's a good thing, so.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Okay, thank you.
I have a comment about nematodes. I have a degree in biochemistry from Cornell and I took a course in microbiology. And that was quite a long time ago and they were talking about all kinds of nematodes then. And a farmer who's probably farmed for over 40 years in Massachusetts has used parasitic nematodes. So there's not a big mystery about nematodes. There's many natural ones, there's all kinds of them, and it's not something that's brand-new.
Okay, I was just concerned, I mean, back when they were using what was it, DDT to kill off-
Oh, yes.
The eagles were eating them and the eagles started dying off.
No, I know what you're, what you're saying, but the point is they don't-
So that was my concern.
Yes, Sheila.
I, I have one more comment for me, I, I just want to make sure that, that people understand that. At Beecher Road School, we actually were leading this 10 years ago. And Ginny was part of the committee that looked at it. 10 years ago, the Woodbridge Board of Education adopted the no pesticide policy, I think, eight years before the state of Connecticut.
Okay.
So we, we, let's always celebrate that, we've, we've had, always been on the leading edge of this.
Maybe the piece that didn't have the nematodes have enough resources like we're hoping for now.
Well, and I like the suggestion of perhaps the town taking over the maintenance of the field. Just kidding, that's something that went back to the literature to bet, but-
I'd have to work Saturday and Sunday.
And, but, but I do think if we're gonna look at the town as a whole, it's kind of silly that we have a different set of, you know, how are we treating the field at Beecher? We do have kids playing on it, we, we do have a runoff problem, I, I think that's a very excellent point, I wasn't even thinking of it. We also have a big problem with poison ivy around the edge of Zinskis Loop. And you heard us talk about how much it took to clear that out. So, I, I'm not saying that, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is that I, I think this is a great thing to be doing and I think it might be broader than the selectmen realize almost in terms of the labor and what we can really do to demonstrate we're truly wanting to educate the public that they, they can go pesticide-free and still have great-looking grounds and, you know, the aesthetic or the quality, the soil holds on to the water and all of that, that, that we should definitely be thinking big. And I, I know it's hard to think big when you're talking about your budget and that's the time of season you're in right now. But I do think that, that Beecher should be a demonstration field as well. And maybe whatever you're gonna do at acorn and peas and everything else, also do it at Beecher. And, and I'm sure the Board of Ed will let you on the fields to do it.
There you go. And your, your co-chair has arrived, so.
Hi Laura. So I gave the sort of summary, but I wondered if you had anything else to add to it.
No, basically that we didn't want to put any more financial burdens on the board. We feel that it, it would be a good, a good idea to have you do it in increments. And at the same time, we want to respect what, what the requirements of Parks and Rec. And we understand that they, you know, need to work with the recommendations and make sure to find excellent solutions for the replacement of the pesticides. So we, we're making that post-recommendations.
And, and I think Laura, the other question we had was whether the COOPOP is, is in any way against going pesticide-free. We were very much in favor of going pesticide-free.
In favor, definitely.
Which is why I'm sure-
Yes, and we appreciate the efforts of-
Absolutely. Everyone.
Everyone. They've worked very, very hard and diligently on, on this project.
Well, the other people that met with us, probably seven of us all together for over probably about 15 months or more.
So, you know, we, public comments was to be at seven, is there anyone here who has a public comment apart from this issue? If not, then we have before us a recommendation from Adam Parsons that you can go pesticide-free on the town-owned ball fields and accepting the cemetery, the Northwest Cemetery and the area around the town hall. So I would entertain a motion to support that-
So moved.
Proposition? Is there a second to that?
Well, I, I, I need a little clarification before I can second, I guess this is an appropriate time to ask my question.
Sure, yeah.
We've kind of been throwing around this idea of playing fields and town-owned property. So, your comment and Beth's motion based on that comment was the playing fields.
I'm, I'm taking the recommendation of Adam on this, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so it's the, it's the playing fields, we're not, we're talking about things like the green right out here. We're not talking about any other town-owned property, the ball, we're just talking about playing fields, that's the motion?
Town Green is a playing field, isn't it?
Is that included?
Kids, kids play over there, right?
Yes.
Which was-
Town Green, right on?
Oh, Town Green, yeah.
Yep.
Kids play over there.
Yeah, rugby and all the kids can use.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that's a playing field.
Yes, it is.
Because my kids played T-ball there.
All right.
So, that's included, Adam, and?
Well, in front of the library, is that considered a playing field?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out.
I'm talking about the Town Green where the-
Do you want to have a 150-foot ban on the playing, of that so-called playing field out there then? I mean, I could do that.
I was just, it was my impression from the last meeting that we were gonna look at two fields for two years and have-
That, that was a recreation suggestion, that's not what, that's not what our motion is, but-
That's what we discussed, and I thought that, that when we discussed that with the recommendation of Rec, that that was something that we were gonna be doing, I mean, I guess that's the way I thought of it. And that seemed to be where the discussion was. Now, Susan, I think that you make a great point. Are we talking about playing fields or are we talking about all town-owned property? Are we talking about any work you do at the Darling House? Are we talking about any work that you do in front of any other building in town? What are we talking about? And, and is, is the budget that you put together include all of that? Or does it just include the ball fields? And when you're talking about the ball fields, we're talking about Center Road, we're talking about Peas Road, we're talking about West River, we're talking about Acorn. And now we're talking about out here, because the kids do play T-ball out here. And opening day for baseball is out there. And there are other fields in town that kids play on, so what exactly are we talking about? And would that, how does that affect your number, Adam? And your labor? I agree with you and I agree with Sheila on the whole cemetery thing as well because, you know, you've, we've got, there's a lot of history in those cemeteries and those, those stones are being destroyed by weather and by mechanical means, like you would say, Adam, and I think it's important that we preserve those things. So I'd really like to know what it is we're talking about.
I think what he's talking about are the fields that you just named, is that correct?
The playing fields.
But is it all town property, that's what-
No.
Well, right, so that, so that helps me understand what the motion is. Okay, so, would you say it again? Who said it?
I, 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 I-
Because my understanding is modified now by Adam and through, through Beth is that there'll be no pesticides used on the ball fields, specifically Alleghy, Center, West River and Acorn Hill and the field here adjacent to the police station.
Right.
Okay, would you accept a friendly amendment? Because I'd like to ban it as much as possible, but I understand that that may not be possible right now. Would you accept a friendly amendment that the interested parties report back in six months to determine the progress of this program and to determine whether and what other town-owned properties should come under the ban? So that just, in other words, I don't want to vote for this with respect to the fields and then, you know, we don't hear anything again. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna know if it's working and it's not working, coming back, what else can we add?
I don't think you're gonna see anything in six months.
Say, okay, so what's appropriate, 12 months, get all four seasons under our belt?
Two years.
Two years?
No, 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 too long, too long, too long. Too long.
A year.
A year is okay.
12 months, four seasons, okay.
And in this process, Adam, if you were to see that a field was deteriorating in this process, you would report back to the Board of Selectmen and do, and recommend appropriate remedial steps, is that correct?
Exactly.
So could we, so could your friendly amendment be a year?
Well, absolutely, in fact, I, I had a question on six months, it didn't sound like it was gonna be either.
I think that's kind of a happy-
I think 12 months works.
That's fine.
12 months works.
12 months.
Could I add a friendly amendment to my, an even friendlier amendment, I don't know. Perhaps that, that as well, we could assign, as, as you said, Dr. Schneider and your, it could be assigned to the first selectman who could then request assistance when he felt it was necessary, rather than this ADHOC committee at this point. Is that?
I'm sorry, what, who's that?
Say that again, say it too quick, sorry.
Well, that's, that's actually in the policy of the councilor, that if, that the first selectman, I'd be able to-
Do you want to deal with the policy separately or do you want to just?
Let's just deal with the, with the ban.
Okay.
All right.
And then we'll deal with-
Then we'll take away the unfriend, the friendly-
The committee or whatever, where we-
Okay, all right.
So I think what's-
Susan, can you clarify, I didn't understand, in a, in a year, we're, we'd come back to see how it's working on the stuff we've already banned? Or we're, the purpose would be to also consider adding in the town-owned property?
Both, I would assume both.
If it's working well, maybe we can do more.
So I think the motion as it stands, should I take a stab at this, Ed?
Sure.
You want me to take a stab at it? I think the motion as it stands right now, assuming you accept my friendly amendment, is that the Board of Selectmen adopt a policy to ban pesticide use on all town-owned playing fields effective immediately, with a report back by the interested parties, and I'm not sure who that is, in 12 months to determine whether and what other town-owned proper, whether it's working and what other town-owned properties should be phased in under the auspices of the ban.
And could those-
Yeah, that would add to that, and in the event that there's a deterioration of a field in Adam's judgment or Recreation Commission's judgment, then they would report back to the first selectmen and recommend, immediately and recommend the remedial measures.
I would accept, I would second that.
Me too.
Yes. Did you get that, Jerry?
Whenever, whenever all the tape was.
So I would second that. So let me get this correct, that, the gardens, the gardens-
Why should you be different?
The gar, the gardens around the town. Can I use roundup on that or no? I would think you'd continue to do what you're doing.
Correct, yes, yeah, correct, yeah.
In the ball fields, any ball fields, that's it.
Including the Town Green, very important.
Because I could do it at the gazebo, the weeds, the gazebo and-
Kids, kids are running there all the time.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't apply pesticides on that field whatsoever at all.
And I'm not sure how, I don't think this needs to be part of the motion, but if, if it's a 12-month period, we, people come, I mean, that's really, it seems to be the time when you, when we can do in this public education piece of this, because then you have some results, I mean, that makes a certain sense.
Right, but then we'd get a report back from Recreation and from-
Yeah.
And if, if, if after a year, it's clear from Rec that we're losing fields and, or from Adam that we're losing fields, then we would reconsider moving through, what we would do at that point in time, we'd have to-
We don't, yeah, we don't know that part.
Okay.
We don't know that part, yes.
Is there a second to that?
I think I seconded the whole, whatever.
Is there any discussion?
Do we just have that?
Right, we've had a lot of discussion, okay. All right, hearing further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, okay, five to one. All right, thank you very much, thank you all for your efforts and-
I, I think we still have to talk about which one of these versions are gonna be the final version for the town policy, or the COOPOP with one.
So could I make a recommendation?
Is it friendly?
Friendly, refer.
Well, just, I, I saw the two and I've looked at it and I, I've talked with Snyder's at the last meeting and I think they know where I stand as far as that goes. I have complete confidence in Adam and I, my kids have played on the fields that he's maintained for years and he does a great job. I see no reason to have him report to anybody except Tony and Ed. And if the, if you feel as though you're losing a field or you feel as though it's working great, then, you know, that's what you do, that's your job. I think we should just let you do your job. So I would recommend that we don't have a committee, we just let Adam do his job, would be my recommendation.
But, but do we still need to adopt a policy?
Well, yeah, there's a bunch of polit, but I think that Mr. Schneider and I can get together with COOPOP, Sheila and Laura, and get, get one policy.
I mean, I think the one that you wrote, Jerry, seems to be the one that I would be more inclined to.
Well, okay, we, why don't we just put some of these things together and bring it to the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting? We know what the intent is, we just gotta agree on the word.
Yeah, I mean, I think you just need to define what pesticide is and all that kind of stuff, so we'll read the policy.
We can do that.
Because basically, I agree with Tom about it, yeah.
Maybe the three of us can get together. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.